...the order of the Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty seventeen meetings of Tamaki River Council. That's the indication by Council and Kara, and I'll follow with pleasure.
This is a prayer for Memorial Day. Our nation endures and thrives because of the devotion of our men and women in uniform, who from generation to generation carry a burden heavier than any we may ever know. On Memorial Day, we honor those who have borne conflicts' greatest costs, mourn where the wounds of the war are fresh, and pray for a just-lasting peace. The American fabric is stitched with stories of sons and daughters who gave their lives in service to the country they loved. They were patriots who overthrew an empire and sparked revolution. They were courageous men and women who stood to hold a young unit together. They were ordinary citizens who rolled back creeping tide of tyranny, who stood post through a long, twirling struggle, who saw terror and extremism threaten our world's security and said, "I'll go." Though their stories are unique to the challenges they faced, our fallen service members are found by a legacy of valor woven under republic itself. Now they lay rest in quiet corners of our country and the world, but they live on in the families who loved them and in the soul of a nation that is safer from their service. On Memorial Day, we join together and burp for the fallen. We remember all who have borne the battle, whose devotion to duty has sustained our country and kept safe our heritage as a free people and a free society. Though our heartaches and their absence, we find comfort in knowing that their legacy lives on in all of us in the security that lets us live in peace, the prosperity that allows us to pursue our dreams, and the love that still beats in those who know them. May God bless the souls of honorable warriors we have lost, and may He watch over them and women, over the men and women who serve us now, today, and tomorrow. Let us give them thanks by remaining true to the values and virtues for which they fight. Amen.
Pleasure to be here today, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, equal as one, in liberty and justice for all.
Before we sit down, it would be appropriate to just have a moment of silence in honor of Georgiana Knowles, who is a rural council person who we lost. Thank you. I will call.
Kara?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Gersky?
Blansky?
Mace?
Here.
Thanks for having the reading, the admittance to the regular council meeting held on May second.
Take a motion, Spencer, to read the minutes.
Motion by Bryer, second.
Second.
Second by Ron to accept admittance as written. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications.
First is from Pastor Steve Gitz, Revive Community Fellowship. We'd like to request the use of the Dutch Hill Playground on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, June twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, from two thirty to four P.M. We will be hosting a kids' club and providing free games, crafts, and activities for the kids in the community. Revive Community Fellowship would also like to request the Dutch Hill Baseball Field at two forty North Columbia Street on Monday through Thursday, July seventeenth through the twentieth, from two thirty P.M. to four P.M., to host a sports camp that will provide free activities, sports games, and stories for the children in the community. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
You probably entertain a motion to grant the request, however, really, I think it's better suited to go to the baseball association as they're the association that oversees that particular part. Or we did reach out to them, and they have discussed it with baseballs. Okay.
Not to ham- listen, I'm not familiar with this group, but... So do we, I mean, do we require insurance and liabilities and all these things for everything that we do throughout? Do we actually get those from those groups we have, and they have them?
Yeah, we get-
Okay, I'm fine.
Well, now, this particular one, I'm not certain. But if we don't get it, I'll make it known. But we've been getting them with people who have events in town.
Sure. I guess just, so this one's off in the organization, just-
This is not the first year of this last year's work. Yeah, they, uh, they've been around at different events. They went east during the Tampa Bay playground.
Do you have a search name?
Maybe National Night Out.
It just has, we've got, we've got it.
They have a website. Have to look it up. Counsel's motion regarding the request.
I'll make a motion to grant the motion.
Motion by Ron, is there a second? Second by Tom to grant the requests from Revive Community Fellowship. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is from Liz Pinky. I'm requesting permission for the members of the Tamaki River Ways, who are also USA Swimming members, to hold a few swim practices at the Bungalo Pool. I made a similar request last year. I have also spoken with Adrian Bogalski, pool manager, and she has indicated that she will work with us to accommodate the swimmers during certain times that she or another pool manager is at the pool already. So as not to incur any additional hours or place any burden on the pool staff, I am hoping to have two to three practices a week for no more than an hour at a time. The team will be attending a meet at Penn State on June sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, and another in Allentown on July sixth, seventh, and eighth, and would not require the use of the pool following the meet. Being able to practice in a fifty-meter facility is a great advantage for shoreswimmers who are used to competing and practicing in a twenty-five-yard pool for most of the year. The only swimmers who would be participating in this are ones that are currently registered with USA Swimming, and I will be attending as their coach. Excuse me. I currently have my American Red Cross Life Guard Certification and my USA Swimming Coach Certification. I have included the insurance information that covers these swimmers and myself at any facility where we are acting under the umbrella of USA Swimming. My USA Certification is set to expire on June first, however, I am currently in the process of updating my lifeguard certification, which will renew my USA Certification when completed. I will forward you my most current USA registration information once that is received. Please advise if we may make any additional fees for this usage.
Make a motion to grant the motion.
Motion by Ron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian to grant requests from Liz Pinky. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Last one is from Matthew Stanek. I'm writing to inform you that I have recently accepted an offer for resident internship at Geswin's, yeah, Stabigas, so I thought that. General Home and School of Haven, PA. I'm excited, as this internship is the next step in the process of becoming licensed as a general director. However, I also have a concern regarding potential time conflicts, which is why I am resigning from the position of assistant pool manager at the H.D. Wheeler Memorial Pool. I'm extremely thankful for the opportunities that working at the Bungalo have created for me. I enjoyed several years as a lifeguard, senior lifeguard, and assistant pool manager. I also plan on continuing to instruct lifeguarding certification and recertification courses through the American Red Cross in the future, which could help current lifeguards to maintain their certification status, as well as training prospective lifeguards with the skills important to lifeguarding, and I am more than willing to assist with in-service training for the current lifeguarding staff if asked. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion by Ron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom to accept Mr. Stanek's resignation letter. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And if you can just send that letter of thanks for his years of service, appreciate that.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Your own answers report.
Yes, sir. Okay, just a few updates before we get on things on the agenda. I'm sure everyone's noticed the work being done down in Deport Square Park. That's moving along nicely. When Grager has done his work there, we asked him to take a look at our trees downtown. We're aware that some of them have died, and a few will need some training, so we've asked him to take a look at those, and then, you know, give us a suggestion for replacement and so forth. Also, Rob scheduled the cleaning of the sidewalks that was requested at the last meeting. I know we have two of the fire companies on board with that, and we're just waiting to hear from the other two. Also concerning sidewalks, we've made some progress on the Family Dollar sidewalk, finally. We have a plan, and the hard copy of the plan came today, in fact, hand in check. So Barry Isaac is issuing a permit, and they're restoring checking for the permit for use-
Yes, yes.
The permit application is opposed, and we're not supplying the concrete or anything like that.
Right, right.
No, no, no. They were asking us to do it, and we're like, no, we don't do that. So that is, we're seeing some progress on that side. Also, just a quick update on the pool. We cleaned the pool as we patched the walls. It's refilling. Our next step will be installing the handicap that we purchased, which is a B-G. So that's coming along nicely, too. And then, the items I have on the agenda, I put Board of Health ordinance on the agenda because we're lacking a suitable ordinance regulating the Board of Health. The ordinance is attached to your agenda. I gave it to Barry Isaac to review and also Board of Health, and there was a few questions that went through by my, and some questions and comments back and forth, but both Barry Isaac and Board of Health told me they're okay with it.
Does it need to be advertised before adoption, correct?
Oh, yes.
I think so. Are you looking for a motion to advertise it?
I look.
Yes, or so, okay. You just said you were-
Mike prepared it.
Okay, I thought you said Barry Isaac.
He did start with that, and then he mentioned Mike towards the end.
Yeah, Mike prepared it, Barry Isaac's fine, with the Board of Health's fine. So we have councils in agreement, the next step will be to advertise.
Do you want to entertain a motion to advertise it?
Make a motion to advertise the ordinance for the Health Office.
Motion by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron to advertise the Board of Health ordinance in the borough of Tamaki. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for that. And the other item I have on the agenda is concerning the detour for the Wabash Creek Bridge project, which is scheduled for next year. We've been talking with Penn Dot and its engineer about the detour route, and they're finalizing their plans for parking and traffic restrictions, and they'd like to get some input from council. So I guess what I'm asking is if council could assign that to a committee, perhaps to meet with Penn Dot's engineer to discuss parking and traffic restrictions.
Sounds like parking and traffic, unless we needed some sort of ad hoc committee for that, but your call.
It's your call.
I would recommend assigning it to parking and traffic to meet with Penn Dot for review of the plan.
Okay, make a comment on that.
Sure.
I talked to them. One person comes up from Allentown every day into Tamaki, and they live up in the South Ward, and you're not going to be able to turn on Spruce Street when you come into town.
Correct.
So you're going to have to come up to the five points.
Correct.
And there's a left turn arrow.
Yes, that was, we mentioned that to Penn Dot the last time we were here. Yes, yes.
So do you-
We're trying to get an arrow in as part of the project, but I don't know if we'll be successful.
Temporary, however. Yeah, temporary, we're going to take it down. Temporary, and somebody can leave it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's come up since, yeah, because that is the proposal, is one way out of Spruce Street on the center.
And then the other thing, I talked to one of the guys from Gannon Fleming, and I was asking the Los Stadium Hill about paving, and it's not going to be paved until the following year.
Yes.
After the project.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, the bridge work's going to be done next year, 2018. Yeah, and then that gets paved after the bridge, I mean, so. So 2019? Yeah. Have you seen it lately, Tom?
Yes.
Oh, did that look like a million fuckers?
Thank you.
You were the last one. Yep, they did a great job. Take it, Ryan, down it. Yeah.
Well, I would go that far.
If you had an F-250 and you drove it, it's smooth as silk.
Thank you, thank you, it turned out well.
But it's not, I thought it was going to be done in the same year they did the bridge, but it's going to be done in 2019.
Yes.
I think in 2018, they said they're going to do the curb, the curb layers.
Well, in advance, they'll go through and, like, video the road and make repairs, and yes, there's curbing to be, for crosswalks-
Right.
-to be done at the corners, but only for the corners across the detour route, like Spruce and the eye, they're not doing the side streets.
And he says that they will patch the road before detour traffic goes on.
Yes. Do you want to entertain a motion to refer the Penn Dot to review the parking and traffic? Motion by Ron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian to refer the Penn Dot, the review of Penn Dot detour details in the Parking and Traffic Committee. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion?
If parking and traffic, they'd like me to stick my nose into that, I will.
For you to stick your nose in, then one of them has to stick their nose out, so...
They're aware, aren't they?
And I have no issue with that, but you'd sort of have to resolve that amongst yourselves. You can only have three of them, three of us meet with them.
Yeah. Starting my living room.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I think Dan's going to fight Ian.
He'd be welcome. He'd be welcome. I mean, as far as setting this meeting, I mean, is this super important now, medium important in two months? Well, they're getting close to finishing their proposal, so we were hoping to do it sooner, rather than later. They didn't give me a, I don't believe they gave us a timeframe. Ask them when. Yep. Any other questions or comments from council or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and I guess, lastly, I'd ask council if we consider an executive session during the end of the meeting. I think Mary and I both have some things we need to talk about, real estate matters and litigation.
Okay. Director, we need to build it.
This one, Kevin, your report. We had, didn't we have an arborist from Penn State that came in and told us what kind of trees we had to do in downtown? So they've already been in, Kevin, so I don't know that Grager can obviously do something that should just inform him from him to see what they recommend.
I guess, I'll address that.
Yeah. So he did make recommendations, and that was working toward a tree vitalized grant, which the application is in August, so that would be for the following year. So it doesn't seem, we might as well move forward with doing the work that they were going to do, which he suggested anyway. Grager seems to be picking away trees.
Just, I'm saying, we have some work already to do, so we can just, like you said, dovetail onto that one.
Yes, yes.
One thing we took notice to is the trees that die are all of the same species.
Yes.
So that makes us wonder, do they have a disease, a parasite, something like that? So we're not necessarily locked into that species, I mean, we could do, we're talking to Grager about something else. What does he recommend?
So you have the same trees, remind, that they had put in up around the college, but they had an issue up there also.
They did, those were-
And Henry cut all them down after he-
Yeah.
They would have actually been tested the rest of them.
Yeah, they were, they called us and asked if they could remove them, take them to the brush pile, and I believe they were heard to prevent the spread of, I believe it was a parasite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, first thing on the agenda, the resolution modifying 2014 and 2015 CD BG Council made a motion to modify the funds to use from paving streets to working on the Lincoln Street wall, and after doing the income survey, that is ineligible. Therefore, I need a motion to rescind that motion, which is number 2017-6, unfortunately.
Is that a resolution to rescind the resolution?
Yeah, a motion to rescind that resolution, because we're un-modifying the funds.
Right.
So what the county said was-
Just rescind it and basically make the bill void?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a reason at this point of rescinding it to reallocate at the same time, or is it a separate motion?
It's going to have to be a separate, because wouldn't it revert back to the original-
It just reverts back to the original.
Plan?
Yes, so all we need is to rescind the motion.
Make a motion to rescind the motion for the CD BG program.
Motion by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron to rescind Resolution 2017-6, which was a modification to the CD BG program for fiscal years 2014 and '15. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The other thing with CD BG is we have to start thinking about the 2017 application, and we need to hold a public hearing, and we should set a date. I'm recommending that we do that sooner rather than later, and in fact, I would recommend we do it a half hour before the next council meeting, if possible.
Well, just to pick a date that we're sure we're going to have, Thursday, third Tuesday of June, June 20th? So I would recommend 6:30 on June 20th.
We did the survey, not even close.
No, that wasn't what I was going, the next question was going to be, not how long did that take?
Um, two weeks, I'd like to go three weeks to follow up, thinking we would-
Okay, so that was the overall scope of the effort, how many hours did it take you to complete that, I'm just curious?
Oh, it wasn't, I don't think hour-wise it was very difficult, but that was a small, you know, for a lot of-
No, I get it, and for a larger project with a larger scope-
I'd say it took me an hour, hour and a half.
In frame, I want to frame a reference, that's all.
It's a little bit of pain. I mean, a larger group of people, it could be difficult.
So I think what you're saying, the plan should be, when I mean these type of projects, is to, does it need some of the darker neighborhoods?
Yes, absolutely.
And there's no restrictions, like you said, on the barrier removal, and demolition also?
Demolition, but they want demolition to apply for the state grant, so don't even think about demolition.
So that was not just a meaning? So don't use it for CD BG until the state funds are exhausted, is that-
Exactly.
Just another barrier, sorry. You remove that barrier from CD BG?
Sorry to be fair about that.
It's all right.
I am.
So it was denied for the Washington Street project, so is there a different thought on funding for Washington Street at this point, or no?
No.
Okay.
I brought up a-
And we got any of the engineering back? I thought we approved the initial study. For the walls? Yeah.
Even Estepen, designing for me.
We just had to do some preliminary, we had the alphabetists do some preliminary work to come up with, I guess, a conceptual plan, you could say, but we didn't sign a contract with them to actually design it. We didn't do the survey for it. Correct, yeah.
And at the last meeting, I brought up applying to the ACTR team for the Bungalo Master Plan Pool feasibility study, and that we would need a resolution allowing me to apply and Georgia to execute the documents, so I'm asking that you pass a resolution allowing us to apply to the Greenway Trails Recreation Program grants in the amount of $45,000.
Does that copy that in our packet?
No.
It is not to do the work on the inside of the women's bat house?
No, this is to get us up to speed and have plans going forward, so we can apply in the future to DCNR, since we can no longer use CD BG at Bungalo. So we have to do feasibility study for the pool, and we need to do a study for the outside, and I'd rather have someone else pay for it.
If I can paraphrase the resolution, which is, I don't think we have a copy of this in front of us, it's that the Rob Tamaki requests from Greenway Trails Recreation Program a grant in the amount of $45,000, as Mary had just indicated, for a master plan for the pool and the feasibility study, and further would designate myself and Georgia as the officials to execute all documents regarding it, and third paragraph is basically Georgia saying that all of the above is a true and correct copy of the resolution that we adopted. The only person who actually signs it is Georgia.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion by Brian, second by Ron to adopt the resolution, authorize a grant request from GTRP in the amount of $45,000. Thank you.
What happens to the many, they manage $11,000 for pre-engineering, have to look at overseas construction? This letter here, proposal for professional engineering services to improve the Bungalo Bat House.
So that's for CD BG?
That's still a goal.
So that's covered?
Yeah, that was still a goal.
This is beyond that, this is the future.
Yeah.
This is having a master plan in place that is the precursor to being able to apply for grants for the facility in the future. Any other questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, it's a resolution, so we'll have a roll call then.
Bowman?
Yes.
Kara?
Yeah.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
And Mace?
Yes. Daisy, I'll start.
The only other item, there was a request, and I will look into it, I had to do it before this meeting, to hook up the microphones again, which are back there, so just-
I'll, I'll spend an hour and get whatever you back together.
There'll be a lot of basing in system, right? Yeah.
Yes.
About ten days.
Here's a letter of support.
Oh, yes, and a letter of support, you all received a letter of support, suggested letter of support for Yingling Brewery is applying for a state grant, significant state grant, I don't know the details, over economic development, and course is a show of support. We support something that would have ripple effect and positive for Tamaki. The mayor already sent a letter of support on his own, thank you for that.
Here.
Yeah, he doesn't require council approval. So I would ask that you approve sending a letter to-
I make a motion to send a letter here.
Motion by- Here, uh, motion by Ron, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian to send a letter of support for, to RACP. I just, under the question, what is RACP? Redevelopment Assistance Capital Project. It's what, paid for streetscape project. Okay, so send a letter of support to RACP in support of, uh, Yingling tourism effort. Uh, any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Mary?
It's just that I did meet with Forrester, it was very, very informative and that application is extremely positive, he's willing to help us plant, make a plan to replace trees downtown and basically the application is if you put in $2,500, you get $10,000. So I'm, it's, yeah, it's a very good match. Some suggestions were a plan where we know trees will die downtown and we will have to replace next year or the year after and some at the Bungalow and he had some very good ideas that will share with the poster. So, great program.
Talking about trees, Father Frank would like to take down some trees in front of St. Peter Falls Parish on Pine Street. And he doesn't need any approval from a borough, he just gets a regular one, person takes the tree down. Takes it down.
He doesn't need borough approval. Yeah, we have nothing regulating trees in Bungalow, just, uh, grass.
Two big ones out front?
Two big ones.
Big one, yeah.
And then they'll take down some of these gatherings.
All right, anything else, Barry?
That's all I have today.
Anything else, Chief? Um, there's parking and traffic.
Parking leader upgrade.
Oh, is that me? Since you're on, Dave.
Well, let's take this knowledge and if you're planning to... Like a little pony?
Okay, uh, I believe, uh, in your packet, um, there is a, uh, notice from Duncan Eagle meters about, I believe, a spring sale and, um, a discount of approximately 25% off of their, um, this price for the Duncan Eagle meters. I believe in the fall, we bought 10 meters. Yes, I think so. And, uh, the last quote that I think I saw on those 10 meters was $176 um, per meter, so, um, that's what we had done in the fall. We've also, we've begun to, uh, I guess also look at the area from, on Pine Street between, from Broad Street to, I'm going to say Mach Chunk. Uh, we've also looked at Mach Chunk from the Five Points to Pine Street. I did look at Center Street, uh, in the area of, uh, the Toaqua diner and then there's another area on South Raro Street, basically from Thomas down to the Five Points. On Pine Street, I believe, uh, there are 19 meters. Center Street, there are six and Mach Chunk, there are 17. Uh, I don't have the number from Raro Street, I'm sorry. But, uh, we did this in the fall based on some assumptions that, um, the parking revenue, uh, with the old meters, and it is our goal to try and eliminate all the nickel dime meters first, followed by the nickel dime quarter meters. In, uh, I looked at the revenues that we had, uh, used in our analysis back in 2016, April, May, and June. Uh, a meter on Berwick Street in April, May, and June, uh, for the month was 38, 43, and $43. If you divide that by, um, four weeks in a month, it was 950, 1095, 1081, uh, per week. So, uh, I guess we did, I'm not sure when we actually bought those meters, Kevin, do you have that actual invoice? I only have the original quote.
Yeah, I don't know that I brought it, um, yeah. I think it was October.
Okay, 'cause the, uh, the quote was dated, uh, in August, so I guess between August and, and October, we, we did that. I asked Chief Weaver to, uh, follow up with, um, with some, some revenue statistics on the meters that we bought because again, we were kind of buying them from the general fund and our desire was to repay them. So, uh, in November, um, I had a, um, revenue figure of $125 and if there, if that was for the 10 meters, because I believe I tried to ask him to track all the income from them, uh, that would've only been a marginal increase from, let's just say, $10 to $1,250. Into December, uh, he gave me a figure of 174, uh, which then moves that up to $17, $17.5. So, $7 a week times the week from, uh, when we installed them until today, uh, I'd have to do some quick math, but that would be the repayment.
Well, assume October, there's, let's just stipulate that there's four weeks in a month.
Right.
So four times three, seven, not quite, yeah, let's say seven months, times four is 28.
Right.
Times seven is...
28?
28, 196.
Why, why are we, so I'm just asking because in, in what can I report here? It says the meter main, meter point collection, $3,851 for the month of April.
That's the total.
So we're looking to, to break it out by meter?
Well, what we, what we were trying to do is, we were trying to rationalize buying the meters because the, the, the meter purchased before that, we used CDBG money.
It was in essence off budget.
Yeah, we used CDBG money and then it was declared that, uh, meters were ineligible, I believe, uh, for purchase. So then, then we decided we were going to try and do it, as they've said, off budget. So we were looking at ways to kind of say, what's the incremental revenue in a nickel dime meter versus, or a quarter meter versus a nickel dime?
And we reset to a quarter, so we're set to a quarter. My, my point is that regardless, I mean, I don't wanna say regardless of cost, but however you get to that number, the nickel dimes are going away.
Yes.
And they're costless, money to do new repairs or, and we can't get parts. So I guess the, what I'm saying is, we're going down this road. So I look at is if I have to pay $2,000 for meters, I just brought in 30, 50 for meters, covers the cost.
Well, I think we just showed, we paid for itself in seven months.
Ah, that's, that's my point.
We just got to the same point through, through a different...
Well, I was trying to get, we're looking at a per meter number, which you were, I'm just looking at a, at a total month, here you go. What was your final math, Dave?
It was by twenty-eight weeks times seven, times $7.
Yes, seven months times four weeks a month times $7 incremental increase. There's $196 over that period and the years cost $176. So we just paid it off.
Actually, the years cost less, I think, according to this, 25% spring deal that we could...
I, I was, I was referring to the ones that we had purchased previously, yes.
We could potentially pay it off in five months.
Correct, yes.
Right. So, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, validate that what we were doing was right because if you remember, Chris, you didn't, you didn't want me spending...
$17,000, my math was off, I didn't, I didn't quick enough. But at the end of the day, we didn't have $17,000 in our budget to take back, so...
Correct, we did.
So at the rate, though, so at the rate that you just, on the payoff rate, and what's in here, there was a total of 15.
15.
The proposal was for 15 to purchase 15?
Um, oh, that's just a number that I pulled out.
Okay, I guess my point is, if we're getting this rate and we're seeing a return, why aren't we doing more than 15? We don't have the money in the budget. But at the return...
No, that was just, exactly. If you expect to see it back in six months, then, yeah, do we take the leap to, how, how many do we take the leap on? Is what it goes down to.
Because again, that was, the, the idea was to take a, to take a small step as far as the 10 goes, to see how long it would take. Because if it takes longer, then we can't buy more meters. I was not thinking that we would have an opportunity to save 25% on the meter purchase, so...
Plus the above and collecting on.
So again, there's a group of, I believe it is 19 on Pine Street that I thought we had targeted. The Center Street meters...
You said there's six there.
There's six there, um, as well, or, or the Mach Chunk group, which is 17.
Well, 19 and six makes a block of 25 and that seems like a, you said around number to do a 25% off. I'm just throwing out a suggestion.
And if we were going to talk about when there was money available, it is certainly more readily available, correct me if I'm wrong, Georgia, today than it is in November. At November, the tax dollars, the tax dollars aren't coming, so getting that money back in November would be a huge boon as opposed to, um, spending it in November.
Yeah, and in theory, the, the 10 meters that we're talking about are also contributing to, they're going to continue to contribute to the bottom line.
So you, so make a motion, yeah, 25,000 meters at the comparative rate, that's, you okay with that?
I think I heard a motion by Brian, is there a second?
I'll make the motion.
By a reporter. Motion by Brian, is there a second? To, uh, purchase 25 parking meters from Eagle, Duncan Eagle meter at, uh... Yeah, Dave, you seconded the motion, you wanted to make yourself.
He had a half an hour to make the motion.
I said the motion by Brian. I, I got accused of spending...
$17,000.
Last time, I don't, now I'm...
November when we didn't have...
Go ahead, please.
We didn't, we had $45,000.
Comes to 3,300, well, plus...
Sorry.
Yeah, I guess.
We are okay, we did a motion on the floor.
And we've got the second, let's vote on it.
I was trying to report with the motion, Larry.
You got me on board, come on.
To approve the purchase of 25 Duncan Eagle meter and housing, uh, parking meters at their 25% off of this price. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or, yeah, or, or... If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, uh, parking and traffic, we're still under parking and traffic.
Okay, uh, I would like, in addition to the PNDOT needing, I would like, um, at the last meeting, I asked Kevin to dig out the information that PNDOT provided us regarding Railroad Street. And I wanted to, uh, sit down with parking and traffic, uh, and I'm gonna say next Tuesday and talk about that and see if we can get something moving there in terms of street markings and crosswalks, uh, prior so we can maybe get that done as the summer is starting. I just feel that there's a tremendous amount, uh, more traffic in that area. The, uh, restaurant taking off and the creamery and just all the other businesses in that area. And we did have an incident there last year and we've done nothing. I can dovetail on that comment. Um, there's, uh, so you... Lines that should be repainted that are supposed to, are intended to try and help tractor trailers get through that areas so that they actually turn up Mach Chunk Street rather than, uh, Railroad Street. Uh, and I think in conjunction with that, that intersection is becoming cratered. So, um, I don't know if that's on us or, is that on us to repair or for them to repair? We just stay vigilant about that because it's, it's really happening.
We can do temporary patching, maybe. We can do that, we do have the, the DARN to, to work with it. But as a big project and a big assignment, that needs to be done.
I mean, they got, they got a lot of issues up through that whole section. I mean, in Pine Street itself is falling apart.
It is, we're recording the whole stretch.
Yeah.
There's some big problems.
The sand is faded, actually, when you get the construction to smooth part of it.
Yeah, it is actually. Obviously, you don't want to stripe something in the effort of trying to keep traffic flowing in the right direction than have them come to, start redoing work. So, the next day or something like that, so it just wants to be coordinated, but also, please, just, uh, continue to stay out of the, the, the...
Anything else stand on parking and traffic? Finance, invasion salary?
Like to make a motion to hire Tyler Hollivod as a part-time general maintenance worker.
Motion by Tombs or second?
Second.
Second by Brian to hire Tyler, Tyler Hollivod for part-time general maintenance work. Do we need to wait for that or is that, is this gonna be a...
He's sponsored at eight, but they progress 25 cents per year for service.
So does he need $25? I don't know if we need to amend the motion, but just if it's understood, what is, what is our rate is? For past practice? Okay. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion? First to the second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else for finance, invasion salary? Okay, recreation and youth?
Yes, Mr. President, um, we accepted Matt Stanek's letter of resignation as a result of, um, the, making a motion to hire Emily Babalski as assistant pool manager at a pay rate of $1,250 per hour for the 2017 pool season.
Motion by Dan is our second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron to hire Emily Babalski as assistant pool manager at a pay rate of $1,250 an hour. Questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor, excuse me, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, uh, and, uh, keeping with filling these slots, uh, as people were definitely to assistant pool manager, like to make a motion to hire Nathan Steigerwald as senior lifeguard in her place at a pay rate of $10 per hour when acting as pool manager for the 2017 pool season.
Second to motion?
Motion by Dan, second by Ron, to hire Nathan Steigerwald as senior lifeguard, pay rate of $10 an hour when acting in that capacity. Questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I think lifeguard, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Yes, Mr. President, I have a few more lifeguard applicants, uh, I'd like to hire for the 2017 pool season, I believe, or seven. It's Casey Agents, Gabriel Markowitz, Victoria Markowitz, John Adritzko, Caitlin Chalanta, Sierra Sabazo.
Zabo.
Zabo, sorry, and Megan Tog.
Everybody can have evidence for a last name.
Correct.
Motion by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron to hire those applicants, uh, for the lifeguard position for the upcoming pool season. Any questions or comments from council regarding the motion?
Uh, you've been talking today, Adrian probably more than I have, I mean, are we, are we pretty well staffed?
Uh, I was, I was gonna say after this was done, that pretty much gets us to about where we need to be.
So we're, we're in good shape now as far as staff is concerned.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from council? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. If there's any other recommendations there. Okay, any other committee reports? Mayor's report? Anyone from the floor wishing to address council? Well, I'll address you, congratulations on the result of yesterday, so... You worked hard for it, no doubt, and, uh, see how it all goes. Uh, Earl Solicitor report, not here, uh, reports confirmed.
Make a motion to accept our reports.
Motion by Brian to accept the reports, is right, second by Tombs. Questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Questions or comments from council regarding the motion? Or from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Do you have any unfinished business? Bills and claims?
So on business? Oh, that's a couple, sorry.
I make a motion to, um, pay bills, review them on Monday.
Okay, motion by Tom to pay the bills, second by Ron. Questions or comments from council regarding the motion? They all appear to order, I trust them. Okay. Uh, any question or comment from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Do business.
Mr. President, uh, at the last meeting, I believe Kevin had a, uh, a couple pages in our packet regarding, um, this is CoStar's and lighting costs. I guess since we are doing the streetlights, uh, I know that we are on a, what, a second year of a second-year contract or something like that?
Yeah, we, uh, well, now in this department, now with energy competition, we can shop around for our energy.
Right.
And we've been, uh, purchasing our energy through a cooperative, through the school, which are the partners in the last several years. And yes, we are in the middle of a contract. Offhand, I can't remember the expiration. But that came in the mail recently, where you can purchase your energy from CoStar's.
Right.
Which I thought was very interesting and worth pursuing. So I would like to pursue that for whether we're getting close to, uh, the expiration or our current energy.
Right, exactly. Is that applied to electric energy, or is that applied to fuel or heating well as well?
I don't know, I haven't explored that far.
Okay.
So, but energy is one, electric energy is one of our biggest expenditures.
Sure.
So, uh, that alone. I'm curious, curious what they, you know, what they have to offer through CoStar.
Yeah, I mean, it's somehow kind of tied with state facilities engineering against to, uh, the PA Department of General Service, you know, through CoStar's and things like that. So I just, you know, wasn't sure that anybody actually looked at it, but I looked at it, and I just wanted to ask Kevin to investigate this further, I guess, as part of the streetlight project, kind of just a sidebar to the streetlight project.
Well, if I can, then, uh, since we've talked about the streetlights, have we had any further update from PTL regarding the major any work? No, I don't believe so. That bill would be on our bill list this evening. I did inform them that it was approved, and the checks in the mail, as we speak. They already have it by the end of the month.
Three hundred and thirty thousand on the bill.
Yeah.
Oh, they did, uh, they did tell me that they were working on compiling that inventory that we asked for and putting it in some kind of a format where they can transmit it to us. They did mention that.
Okay.
Aside from that, I-
You've been fairly close to Harry through this process, and, you know, the squeaky wheel thing here, I think, applies, uh, again, so.
Well, I think it's one of those, we'll, we'll better check.
Okay, fair enough. But then, they need to turn around and do something with it, then, in fairly short order, so.
Yeah, I think they have done too.
Okay.
Sounds like that.
All right. Uh, any other new business? Uh, I know, I heard we needed an executive session, I believe, for legal personnel and real estate matters. So would I make that motion? I think I heard Brian for a second, by Ron, to go into executive session for legal personnel and real estate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay. Thank you.